Okay, at seven o'clock, we'll call the Board of Selectmen of West Bridgewater Meeting to Order. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comment period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. Okay, so seven o'clock, we have an appointment, West Bridgewater Lions Club, application for a one-day liquor license and entertainment license for a concert event.
Yep, so there's an application from the Lions. They're looking to do a charity event on October 24th. It is on a Saturday. And as we normally do, they've held these before. As we normally do is that we, I'm going to ask you to approve the one-day liquor license and because it is for a nonprofit, to waive your fees as well.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license and entertainment license and waive fees.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minimizable. Approve the minutes of September 2nd. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 2nd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the minutes of September 16th, 2020, per review.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vote on Board of Selectmen Representative for OCPC Metropolitan Planning Organization.
So it's very confusing. OCPC that Mr. Moreira sits on right now and is historically set on as a member of the board, that is the steering committee for the entire regional council. They have subcommittees from there and one of them is this Metropolitan Planning Committee. The Metropolitan Planning Committee is made up of nine members, five from the state, one from the mayor of Brockton, one from the town of Plymouth, and then one member from towns under 14,000 and one member from towns exceeding 14,000 in the region of OCPC services. There are eight communities that are under 14,000 and that person that is on there must be an elected selectman or town council member because Bridgewater is part of it. So tonight, if somebody would like to put their name in for this, then we would do a nomination and we would nominate that person. That person then's name would go to OCPC. Assuming they get more than one applicant, OCPC at that point then will vote as to which one of those applicants will be placed onto this committee. This committee is the committee that oversees the federal funds that come into the territory and how they will be spent and prioritized on those DOT projects. And a good example of that is the center of the construction that was done a handful of years ago. Eldon sat on both committees because he was able to, but as a non-elected member, he cannot sit on that committee. So they do meet a minimum of four times a month, or four times a year. It looks like based on their agendas, they normally meet at 10:00 in the morning on Tuesdays. However, that doesn't guarantee it will always be that because I assume once you're on the committee, you discuss it, right? So maybe that was convenient for those committee members at that point. And so if somebody is interested, we can nominate that person, but there's no guarantee you're on it. If nobody is interested or they can't be on it because of work constraints or whatever, then hopefully some other town would sit on it. I will tell you, I haven't had a chance to share it with you. I had to have a conversation with Selectman Anderson. She did have some interest. So I don't know if you have some interest, but if you are okay with Mary, we can nominate her. And if one of you are interested, then we would just do a round of nomination votes and see who wins.
So if this committee's function, I think it is important for us to have representation. If we can possibly do it. It's unfortunate they have their meeting during work hours, but I, you know, I know Eldon was very instrumental on that committee and successful in getting us dollars for construction. So no, I applaud Mary for wanting to be on it. I think it definitely would be a good asset. So I would make a nomination to elect Mary.
Is that a motion?
Well, I would make a nomination, but did you want to be on it? Did you, oh, also, okay.
I will make a motion to nominate Mary as the representative.
And I'll second that.
And just so we're clear, there is one term that is expiring. This would be for the new term, which starts on November 1st, 2022, a two-year term, and it goes through October 31st, 2022.
So that is a vote in favor of Mary.
Did they take the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jump ahead, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, vote on street lighting request for 26 Cross Street?
So 26 Cross Street is not a one road, but there is only one street light on one side and one street light on the other. And this gentleman here, Mr. Knight at 26, lives in the middle. And he has requested that we have a street light following the established process, the streetlight committee reviewed it, and they are recommending that we do place a street light there. I drove up to Cross Street. Mr. Knight is accurate that there aren't any other streetlights in the middle. There are children up there playing, so they requested to add a street light there. If the board is in favor, we'd have to take the vote and we would forward it nationally.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and vote on licensing fee relief due to COVID-19.
So we have, for tonight's purposes, licensing fees that I'm going to discuss or recommend that we make an amendment to has to do with two different sectors. One is for on-premise alcohol, which usually carries a common bit because they have to serve food. And then also for Class 1, Class 2, Class 3 retailers of automobiles, RVs, and trailers. The reason I've selected these ones here is because these are businesses that were not just impacted by COVID-19, because most businesses were, but these businesses were closed for a minimum of a couple of months because they were so ordered to do by government. We do have two different licensing for liquor. One is on-premise, meaning that you go to a restaurant, you drink there. And there's off-premise, meaning that you go there and you bring it home. Off-premise stores were never told to shut. They remained open the entire time. So therefore, I'm not recommending that we do a reduction in their fees. These fees for 2020, they go from January 1st to December 31st. These fees have already been collected for current year and we do not have statutory authority to rescind a fee once paid. If there was a mistake, something meant, you know, that'd be different. But once you submit a fee, after you collect the fee. So my recommendation is going forward for calendar year 2021 is in good faith to say, we appreciate the business that you're attempting to keep in business. We appreciate being a pro-business town and board that were just trying to show some empathy as to what you've had to go through. And again, they were ordered to close. They had no choice in the matter. Assuming that they closed for about 25% of the time is why we were recommending a 25% reduction in fees. That totals about $7,000, all fees. Lorna's done a really nice job on this. She put together all the information for me. We sat down, we vetted this. And she needs to now start to send out her renewal packets that you'll be voting on over the next 60 days for when the New Year starts. So that's why it is timely at this point to have this conversation because Lorna will have to send those packets out and instruct those establishments as to what their fees are.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good thought. I know other towns are doing it. Some are, some aren't. I think it's a good thing to do for the businesses that are impacted.
No, and I like how you're focusing on the companies that were forced to close. I think that's a very important piece there. No, I think this is great.
I think it's a great idea and appreciate that you thought of this, you and Lorna, and put it together and brought it to us. And it's a really nice gesture and appropriate for what they've gone through. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
And I would ask just to make a motion for calendar year 2021.
Okay, we want a motion. Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minimizable. Vote to accept surrender of all alcohol license from Moriego Incorporated DBA Narahuka Lounge, converting to common vic license only.
So currently, the Narahuka Lounge, which you license as both liquor and common vic restaurant, came to me in early August. And at that point, he claimed on attempting to sell his business and close his business, which he did, and closed it down and attempted to market it. We have a letter to that from him. He's attempted to market it. He's been unable to sell it. So he has now formally requested that he surrender his all alcohol license voluntarily and he is going to retain his common vic license through the Board of Selectmen, allowing him to sell food. The Narahuka Lounge will always remain because that is for the Board of Health. We do not have licensing jurisdiction over that. So at this point, I would ask the board to accept his voluntary surrender of his all alcohol license and just convert to a common vic license. In addition to that, he would be retaining his amusement and entertainment license as well.
Okay, any questions, discussions?
I'm not sure I want to argue with anything with someone turning in an alcohol license.
In the license hours, I looked at it as standard with other establishments, restaurants in the area. So is there a motion to accept the surrender and convert to common vic license only for Moriego Inc. Narahuka Lounge?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote signed state election warrant?
So this is your annual warrant, or presidential warrant. So we know that we're going to vote for a president in November. There'll also be the US Senate, all the other state delegation members that are up for election, plus two valid initiatives. So it's just state law that in order for the town clerk to be able to post the warrant for people to know to come in and vote that day, the Board of Selectmen have to take that vote to sign it. So I'll just ask you for that vote.
Is there a motion?
Soon.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Sign third amendment to purchase and sale agreement for billboard on 255 Walnut Street?
So, well, three years ago, we went to town meeting. And at town meeting, we, town meeting approved us being able to market and sell a billboard up on Walnut Street that we now own through tax title foreclosure. We marketed and we received a bid for $132,000 to do a double-sided electronic billboard. It started the permitting process through the ZBA and the ZBA had issues. We had some legal wrangling that went back and forth. And unfortunately, the term of that purchase and sale agreement for the escrow account of the money that we're holding plus the time to get a closing on the sale was expiring. So we did a second amendment to March of 2020, March 31st, 2020. Again, through the negotiation process, they are now going to go from a double side to a single side. And as a result, they are going to reduce their purchase and sale from 132 to 120, which the Selectmen agreed to at that time. However, during the, because of COVID, the ZBA has not met. And so in March, we had a second amendment till September 30th. They have met. They haven't been able to get their permit. We can't close. So we are now asking for a third amendment. So the standard procedure, the standard purchase and sale agreement stays in effect. It's still the same money. It's still the same terms and conditions. But they are now asking to extend it so that way we can finalize the permitting process with the ZBA because the purchase and sale agreement is contingent on a successful permit through the ZBA. So there's a third amendment to extend the closing period through March 31st of 2021.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to sign and approve the amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept Mike Hutchinson's resignation from the Health Insurance Advisory Committee?
Yep, so Madam Chairwoman, if it's acceptable to you, I would like to take the next two together. We have a Health Insurance Advisory Committee. It's required by law that if we were to make health insurance changes, that they have to be negotiated with the union through a Health Insurance Advisory Committee. I've been here for almost eight years. We are not making wholesale changes to our health insurance, so we haven't had to meet. The law requires a union representative from each union. Mike Hutchinson represents the Department of Public Works. And he is asking to resign and in his place, Mr. Anderson is looking to replace him. So I would be looking for a vote to accept Mike Hutchinson's resignation and Mr. Anderson to be appointed. And again, just for full disclosure, in case anybody is wondering, Mr. Anderson is not Selectman Anderson's Bob Anderson. There's no relation.
It's not my Anderson.
Any questions? So is there a motion for accepting a resignation and making an appointment?
Make a motion to accept the resignation? Do we have to do them separately or do we?
Your choice.
Oh, okay. And accept the appointment of Bob Anderson?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have to accept Joan Shea's resignation from the Complete Streets Committee. And I'll roll right into L because that, the next one is to appoint Marilyn Rowley to the Complete Streets Committee.
Exactly. And I would ask that we do these together as well. Joan is on the Complete Streets Committee by way of the fact that she is the ADA representative. She is unable to make those meetings. Ms. Rowley is able to make those meetings. So again, I would ask you to accept Joan Shea's resignation and appoint Marilyn Rowley.
Make a motion to accept Joan Shea's resignation and appoint Marilyn Rowley to the Complete Streets Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
David, could we also send you a thank you letter to those who are resigning? An appreciation of their volunteering and also something to thank the people who are volunteering these positions as well. Thank you. Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. We have a Friendship Park opening ceremony.
Yep, so we all know that CPC provided a large amount of money for Friendship Park. There was also a very active local committee chaired by Mr. Anderson that also raised a substantial amount of money for as well. So I'll turn it over to Mary in just a second if you would like to speak to it. From my standpoint, I want to make sure that you're aware that the ceremony will be on the 9th, which is this Friday afternoon. Will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Howard School is going to have some of their students there, so we'll have students there.
Yes.
And we've also asked the Enterprise to be there and Cable will be there as well. I think it's a nice little, it's going to be a nice event. With that said, I would like to be able to inform Chris Iantelli as to who would like to speak. Would all of you like to speak? Would one of you like to speak representing the board? You know, how would you like to do that?
Well, when I spoke with the other committee members today, we were going to ask Denise, no offense Anthony, but just because Denise was chair and I'm already speaking, so I don't need to do anymore. And you know why it's going to be a cute and fun ceremony? It's an awesome playground. There is this roller slide that is just incredible. So you'll have to try it on Friday.
So
I'd be glad to.
Yeah, good. So we will have, so Mary will speak representing the committee and Denise, you will speak representing the board.
There will be other speakers as well, but that's all your, okay.
So will it be officially opened Friday?
Yes, that's it. And just a reminder that everyone has to wear their masks. I know I've been getting questions about, you know, what kind of precautions are going to be. It's just like with every other public building. Wear a mask and be safe.
No, I agree, especially since, you know, it's going to be a small enough setting. You're not going to be able to be six feet apart in all of this. So wearing a mask, you bring it in to it.
One-on-one work, we're into that. Looks nice.
Oh, it's fine, but I can't wait for the kids. It's going to be awesome.
Good job, Mary.
Thanks.
Correspondence from the public to determine the course of action. I don't think we have any correspondence on which to determine the course of action. Unless there's, no, no question. Public comment period? No public comments. Any idea when we can get back to doing our meetings normal and having the public come?
We could do it now if we had the room to spread them out, yeah.
Yeah, so it's funny because that's part of my COVID-19 update in the Baker Administration gathering order. So first of all, to answer your direct question, I don't have a direct answer.
That was direct.
The gathering order still says that we cannot exceed 25 people for indoor gathering. So Selectman Kennyhan is correct in that if we had a room where we could social distance and we could guarantee that there wouldn't be more than 25 people, we could have a public meeting and people can come and we would do it like a traditional way. So I thought about this because I was thinking we could move our meetings to the Council on Aging. You know, they have all tables, it's a large enough room, people could social distance and we could do that. And now we could start to invite the public. And it's something I'm, if, it's something I'm thinking about probably bringing back to your attention after November. Last time I reported, it has to do with early voting. And our early voting is going to be set up at the Council on Aging and because it goes on for two weeks, they're not going to set it up to break it down. So we want to get past the election before we can use that building. But it's something we can look at. Though caveat to that though, we've got, we cannot bar people from coming to a public meeting. And if it goes to 25, you must stop the meeting. So that's why we haven't done it. So right now, in this room, we have six. So if more than 19 people want to come to that meeting, we can't say, sorry, I know it's a public meeting, but you can't come. We're only going to meet with these people. We would legitimately at that point have to say we are going to, we have to postpone that meeting. And then you would come back to the study. And so that's why we haven't done that. Now, if the board wants to roll the dice and try it, I am more than, you know, it's fine by me. We can try a meeting and that way if some people show up, that's great. Just know that probably what I would recommend, I want to check the legal council on this, but I think what I would do is that we would have the meeting at Council on Aging. Say 30 people showed up. We would then have to make an announcement saying that we cannot do this because we would be in violation of the indoor gathering order. As a result, we are going to continue our meeting to the Board of Selectmen meeting room in which we would do a virtual meeting like we're doing now. And then nobody would be able to come, but everybody would have equal access to where they do now. I think that's what we would have to do. As you know, unless there's a hot button issue, we very rarely get 19 or 20 people at a meeting. But obviously, we always run that list.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you're welcome. So he did just change this past week. The Baker Administration did just change the gathering order. So it is still going to be 25 people for indoors. It is still a maximum of 50 people if somebody is in an outdoor venue at their private residence. But what they have now designated is they have designated two different types of towns, high-risk and low-risk. And based on our count, we have been and continue to be in a low-risk account. So that means for performance venues, think of like sporting events, for example. We can now have a maximum of 250 people in outdoor sporting event. Other than that, our criteria is the same as everybody else. And, you know, we don't really have a lot of sporting events that's going to have 250 people, but it gives us that flexibility. And hopefully that means because the trend in West Bridgewater is so low, that hopefully we can continue to expand on that going forward. Couple of things I will tell you from the call though. One is, is that the state numbers unfortunately do have an upward trajectory. We do have more towns now or cities in the red than we did before. So that is a concern. And as we move indoors, we know that potentially we may start to see more spring as well. The second thing is, is it was the first time, because we always have DPH on here. It was the first time that it was fully acknowledged that even, well, we all know, that even if we get a vaccine over the next 60, 90 days, that it's not going to be mass-produced and readily available for everybody. So it was the first time that they acknowledged we're probably going to be doing this till at least spring, if not summer of next year, assuming best case that we have a vaccine that can get out to everybody. So I think that kind of goes to your answer about when we can get to normal. But it's good news. We only have one active case in West Bridgewater. It gives us a total of 93 since the very beginning. Again, I think that everybody in the town has been doing a great job of social distancing and wearing masks. But unfortunately, one of the negatives to this is the fact that our Veterans Day Parade, which this year would have been held in Bridgewater, has been canceled because it would exceed that 250 number for now doing that. So as a result, that's been canceled, just an FYI. Moving on, my net school spending analysis. I provide this every year as a requirement of the law to the school committee. It's due on September 30th. And so we pull it out, we follow the formula that is set by the state. Bottom line is, the town of West Bridgewater for FY '21 has about $19 million committed to the town for school. That is both for the local school and for southeast regional school. That is about $4 million over what the minimum requirement is for net school spending per state law. That means that we are at least meeting, if not exceeding, our minimum requirement. If you do not meet your minimum requirement, that is when they can withhold state aid. So think Chapter 70 funds and any other local fees. So we certainly exceed that. I think we're doing a really good job. Next one is our notification, and that is going to the school committee as required. Our notification of free cash. The town has just certified that it has about $1 million of free cash.
David, sorry, David, can I just stop you for just one second? On the net school spending, did you say we're about $5 million?
$4 million.
$4 million over what we're required by law to spend?
That is correct.
Okay. So that calculation we get on a per-student basis that we received prior when we were looking at budgets is actually an underestimate?
Correct, because when, when the school does it, they just take their school budget. So in the town side, we pay for things that are not in the school budget. Health insurance, building insurance, and two large ones along with retirement. So we pay for that out of our benefits budget. Benefits budget is $6 million. Eighty-five, 90% of that budget is those three lines. The school makes up 50% of the employees. So it's a big part that does not go into the per-pupil expenditure, but it does into this analysis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. So we have been certified for about $1 million of free cash for the town. The water department is $471,000. Please know that free cash rolls from year to year. So the water department's free cash this year is not $471,000 generated So the water department's free cash this year is not $471,000 generated from this year's budget. I think it was $384,000 that they had left over from last year. So they really had about $80,000 or $90,000 of free cash from this year's budget. And that has been sent to the water department so they are aware. The MS4 report. This is an EPA requirement by federal law. It started in 2003. Under the Obama administration, it became a lot more stringent. Ms. Anderson has FinCom Chair, came into a meeting with me when those rules and regulations changed around 2015. We have submitted the report. The report is analysis as to whether or not we are meeting the criteria that the EPA wants us to meet on annual basis. So we have submitted that report and that is due on October 1st and that has been submitted. John Delano handles our MS4 for us. Quite frankly, we are, at this point, we are just, we're getting by in submitting the report, but there's quite a few areas that we still have to work on. And we'll eventually have to look at hiring additional staff in order to be able to comply with the regulations. OCPC traffic counts. I had a conversation with OCPC over the summer. We had been requested by a handful of residents from Scotland Street. They're, they're, you know, they're frustrated. There is an industrial section in Bridgewater they are attached to. There is more development going in a piece of land than nobody ever contemplated, expected, or thought was going to be developed. And so they're getting squeezed. So what I did was, OCPC was willing to do a free traffic analysis for us. So I asked them to do Scotland Street. So we will now know speed, volume, direction, and type of vehicle. What we do with that information at a later date, we can make some decisions. I know some people would like us to try to look at doing another heavy vehicle exclusion like we did on River Street. That would be extremely difficult to do because they're immediately adjacent to an industrial area. And that exclusion does not prohibit trucks that are going to a direct site that's adjacent. They still have to have access. So it may not, we may not be able to do that. But at this point, it was an opportunity to get a free scientific report done, so we have done that. Once I have the data, I'll be sharing with the board whether or not we do something with it or not, but we'll get the data up front.
So is it possible that we could legally tell big trucks they couldn't come through West Bridgewater? They have to go through Bridgewater to hit Route 24?
In some situations, yes. So on River Street, that's what we did, because they have Route 106. However, if there is, just using a simple example, I moved to River Street and I bought new furniture. And Jordans is gonna come in with their 18-wheeler. They're allowed, because they are coming to my house. Well, the same thing if I live immediately adjacent to River Street. So those trucks have to be able to do their business. They can't be precluded from that. So it's not gonna take out 100% of the vehicles in River, but it will cut out whatever is cut through. And on River Street not being immediately adjacent to an industrial area, it should cut out a lot. I don't think Scotland Street's gonna fall in the same category. There are a lot of those trucks that are going to go either to Pleasant Street, which is in our industrial area, Lincoln wasn't on one side. And on the other side is Elm Street in Bridgewater. So one way or the other, trucks have to get there. So I don't think that we're going to be able to prohibit it, but I wanna get the data first. We can have a conversation about it at that point and see as to whether we can. But reading their, their permitting rules, and look, at River Street, I thought was pretty simple, right? And that took nine months. And that's because they do a lot of detailed analysis of mass DOT, because they get pressure from trucking and trucking organizations. So I can only imagine that this one would be much more difficult to do for those reasons. Next is Halloween trick-or-treating. We have always started to receive phone calls as to whether or not we are canceling trick-or-treating in the town of West Bridgewater. Personally, I don't see how we have any legal jurisdiction to be able to do that. There is some cities, Ristus most recently has canceled it. I'm not sure what they're hanging their hat on, to be honest with you. There is no legal way for me to tell a parent such as yourself with young children, "You can't walk up the sidewalk holding your six-year-old daughter's hand to walk to a neighbor to knock on their door." Because in essence, that's what you're doing, right? That's what you're doing. How do we stop you as government from being able to do that? Now, what you could do from this level is that under a public safety aspect, is you could put a curfew in. City of Rockton has done that, we've seen other cities and towns do that. But you don't normally do it for one night to try to stop trick-or-treating. You would do it usually because there's riots or some other aspects to that. So unless the board feels otherwise, and I've already had this conversation with the Board of Health, the Board of Health is not going to attempt to try to put any restrictions that night as well. All we're going to do is, we're gonna make sure that the CDC guidelines pertaining to trick-or-treating is available and out there so people can review them. I will tell you, CDC would like everybody to not trick-or-treat. That is their actual recommendation. However, people can follow it. I don't think it's the role of us as government to stop people from walking up the sidewalk going to their neighbor's house. So unless the board has any objection, that's what we're gonna continue to communicate to our residents.
No, I agree with that 100%. And it's for both sides, whether you're the one handing out candy or the one bringing kids. If you don't wanna participate, turn your light off, no problem. If you do wanna participate, bring your kid out, wear masks, go have fun with candy.
It's parents' decision and homeowners' decision, and that's where, that's where it ends. Parents can decide what they wanna do and homeowners can decide what they wanna do. And want the kids to have fun.
Or don't.
Or don't.
Oh, yeah, we have fun. We have fun trick-or-treating.
Anthony has fun trick-or-treating, too.
He still presses up, doesn't he?
Of course.
Next on the list then is vote to approve use of town property policy. Just, I wanna spend one minute on this. So we currently have two policies. We have a town use policy that I oversee that's been approved by the Board of Selectmen that, that allows me on short-term events, parades, for example, to sign off, and then I bring it to the board as an FYI. Chris Antelli as DPW Director does the same thing with War Memorial Park, Friendship Park now, and also the gazebo. So that's worked out pretty well, and again, we provide those FYIs. This past summer, there was a request for a permit structure. And quite frankly, in my haste as you go through everything, it wasn't necessarily handled that right, handled exactly the way it should've. But part of it was because we really don't have a policy on permit structures. So after that event, I sat down with Lorna, and Lorna did, Lorna did a very good job on this. She consolidated the policies into one policy. And my feeling is this, we're not always gonna be right, but armed with what we potentially could have done better, let's make some changes to be better going forward. So I'm presenting to you tonight an all-encompassing policy. One, policy makes no changes for what Chris currently is responsible for. Makes no changes to what I'm responsible for, but it's adding a third provision for permanent structures. Those requests would come to our office. We would vet it to get all the information. We would then bring it to the board, and the board would then take that vote. I feel strongly that for anything that would be in perpetuity in the town, it really should be the Selectmen making that decision. But before, it was maybe just common sense or held up to maybe, what do you wanna do? And I think at this point, it would be better to indoctrinate it into an actual policy. So before you, I'm asking to have one all-encompassing policy. First two aspects remain the same, and the third is just putting it as doctrine that the Board of Selectmen would approve a permit structure on town property.
I am still new to these policies. And I asked David earlier today for a copy of it, and I just had one question on it. It was on the application. It said something about a plan to take care of the permanent structure. I wasn't sure what that was, and if they don't, what can we do?
That'll be your decision. I mean, 'cause I'm not gonna be the one making that decision. But I think that if you're going to put a, put a permanent structure up, there's gotta be a long-term O&amp;M plan. And that'll be for you as a board, 'cause you're gonna be talking to the applicant. And I think that they need to bring that to the table, right? So there, it's gonna be incumbent on that person of persons to be able to say, "We want this, and we're going to make sure that we have some type of a plan to make sure that it's maintained and doesn't become a cost burden onto the town." Now, with that said, there may be something that makes a lot of sense that as a board, you guys say, "You know what? You install it, we'll pay to maintain it." And maybe that'll be acceptable to the three of you. And that, that would be your decision to make, it wouldn't be mine. So my, the way the application is envisioned is, put together a plan. But maybe they're going to say, "I have no plan, but I still wanna install it, and I think that the town should take care of it long-term." Fine, that's a board decision. Address the board, make your case, you guys make the decision. So that's why it's there.
I see. Is that standard? Is that normal? I, I'm just thinking of like...
Someone to have to maintain what they put up?
I guess what I'm thinking of is like an Eagle Scout project.
Yeah.
I know, like, the gazebo that's near Friendship Park. I know that there were funds donated and that there is money to maintain that. But I know in the past, I think it was the little library that the Girl Scouts put up. So would a structure like that need to have funding?
Again, I think that's gonna be a decision of the board. That's why I feel, that's why I'm, at this point, I'm saying, make that a conversation with the board as to, "Do you want to allocate funds for that? Or do you wanna say it's a great idea? Go ahead, but we want you in your organization to be responsible for it." I mean, I would think, and again, it's not my fault, but the Girl Scouts is extremely well-respected, long-term organization. I would think that it would not be unfair to require the Girl Scouts to have to do long-term maintenance. They're not a fly-by-night organization.
Right.
But again, that would be your decision to make. I think it builds an ample flexibility, so that way you guys can make that decision.
Cool. You know what's kinda difficult with this is there's no input from the townspeople on what's going to be made a permanent structure in their town. That's one issue I have. I mean, if we're going to put something up somewhere, it usually ends up at town meeting floor and everyone votes on it. A lot of these are small, small little, you know, a library, a little library here. They're not anything of consequence, but it's a decision one person makes on their own that they want. I, I'd like to see some sort of signature list, maybe only 50 people, acknowledging that they support this request. Someone wants to put something up on town property and maintain it, too. I don't think it, it should be each person on their own deciding what's going to go where. If they have support, then have a signature list of 50 residents that support it. Nothing there, nothing difficult. You could probably get 50 signatures in five minutes in, you know, in this town if you've got a great idea and you wanna move forward with it. And I, I'd like to see something go on like that. Just like you have, you know, that you have to get signatures if you wanna run for Selectmen. If you wanna have signa... You know, you're required to have signatures for a variety of things.
Would they have to be verified, then? How do you... Someone would have to check it.
I don't think that's too, too difficult to do.
I mean, we have to pass it on to the town clerk's office. If they're registered voters, they have a signature on file. If they're not a registered voter, they won't. Would I make the suggestion? They can vote this out loud. What if we made an amendment to the policy that said this? Is that, "I want a permanent structure." I do the application, and we call a board meeting. That person makes a persons, makes a presentation to the board. The board takes it under advisement and says, "Okay, in one month, you put it in there. A month later, there will be a vote." So that way, over that next course of a month, people have seen it. You will talk to people, they will talk to people. A month later, it's on your agenda again. Then you can vote on it. And that way, because with the signatures, those are all the people that are gonna be in favor of it, but we may not have heard from anyone who's against it. So during that course of a month, maybe people then will show up. There would be for it and against it, and you could hear from both.
I think I'd still prefer the, I mean, this is my opinion, but these 50 signatures in support of, and that way, it's out there, it comes to us. We don't have to approve it at the first meeting. We can have the presentation. We'll have the consideration of the residents who support it. By then, the meeting's public. Anyone who wants to reach out to us after that and explain why they're not in support of it, we can consider it, and then we vote at the next meeting. It just, everything, you know, it feels a little rushed. And it's, it's hard to say, to really digest it all when you have the person right here in front of you and they're requesting something, it's hard to say no. And sometimes we don't think of the things such as who's going to maintain it and if we've had any other ideas, so...
We could do that with anything, though. I mean, we don't need a politician unless we have to wait, and what, there are two weeks to make a decision. We can take anything under advisement and decide to vote on it at a later date. I just think, I mean, if the three of us were elected to make decisions, I don't fully support having requiring a signature list.
Yeah, it seems a little administratively heavy, and I'm not sure what the benefit would be. 'Cause like you said, it would be very easy to get 50 signatures. What, what value does that bring? I like the idea of us having, being able to take something under advisement and then vote on it later, 'cause we're gonna be the ones who hear from people. You know, people mail letters to our houses, text messages, Facebook. We're, it's easy to get in touch with us.
So maybe just to meet somewhere in the middle, what if we do this? We don't have the signatures, but the policy says that the board will listen to the presenter, and then it will make a decision at a minimum at its next meeting. Unless, that, that way...
Do we have to specify that part? 'Cause then we're really...
We don't have to specify that. We have a right to do that or not. So I wouldn't, I don't think I'd wanna...
'Cause if it's something quick, easy, simple...
If we don't have anything else to consider, other than what they're presenting that time, then I don't think we have to postpone it. But back to the maintenance. Where does that stay? It's kinda be case-by-case basis?
Yeah. And again, that's why I think that, as, as Selectman Kenahan said, you're the elected leaders. You get to be able to say, "Look, we like it, but we want a plan." You know, and we want not, "I promise to take care of it." And if that's acceptable to you, that's okay, 'cause again, you're the elected leaders. But if you want something more than that, you'll be able to enforce that before you take the vote.
Well, maybe during the application process, that can be part of it.
It is, that's why, that's, that's why, but if you wanna know...
I think that's good.
'Cause we incorporated that request. But I'm gonna guess is somebody may eventually write, "I just promised to take care of it." So that's gonna be their plan. If I was sitting at the board, I'd probably vote no. But it'll be up to your decision at that point. But we're gonna at least request it.
Okay. Any further discussion? No, I think that's the, we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, the second. Aldous and David?
Aye.
Okay, that's the end of the stuff.
River Street, just an update to let you know that Mass DOT has formally approved it. The signs have been ordered. They should be installed very soon. Big takers are already called. And what we did was, we, I don't want vehicles using as an excuse, "Oh, I didn't know until I got into River Street." So we're actually placing signs on contiguous streets as well. For example, Bryant and South. It's going to warn drivers, that's going to say, "Heavy vehicle exclusion on River Street." So not only will they be forewarned, it should actually help those residents that live on those streets who have made the same complaints. So without putting an exclusion on those roads, it's gonna help. So anyway, just giving a heads up on that. And the last is, is that on early voting, is it will last for two weeks. It will start in mid-October, finish on like before the election, November 3rd. You know, it'll be two weeks at the Council on Agen.
That is the end of the agenda.
Just to confirm, Halloween's still on? 'Cause that's the first thing I'm gonna be asked, right?
Absolutely, it's on. It's each parent's decision and each homeowner's decision, and my light will be on. Okay, is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second?
Aldous and David?
Aye.
Aye.